Good evening. I'd like to call and order the day seven, 2020 meeting of Mayor and Council. Ask Councilman Tim Carroll to read us a prayer. Please join us.
First of all, thank you for all the blessings that you continue to give us and to know that you are in control and that all things will be better. We ask that you, especially tonight, be with an airman from our dear friends and our family, have extended as they may be at Louis Air Force Base, that young airman who was killed in an accident. Be with him, be with his family, be with his team members' identity. We also ask that on this national day of prayer, that you put your healing hands, not only over just our community, but all of us on the whole world, put your healing hands and help bring to an end this terrible virus. We ask that you lift us all up as we pray to you and try to do your deeds in this we ask. Amen.
Join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Move on to the events approval, the Ballast City Council regular meeting from April 28th at 5:30. The councils have time to review those minutes from that regular meeting. Are there any additions or deletions? Council all around me. If there aren't, the minutes are approved by actual deletion. Item three, ordinances of resolutions, very exciting one, consideration of a resolution authorizing the filing of a section for 5307 grant application with the US Department of Transportation and the Georgia Department of Transportation. Mark Barber, our city manager, will present to all of us.
Thank you very much, Mayor Matheson. Yes, this is really an exciting day. We finally made it to a point where we're ready to apply public transportation funding. I do want, before I go much further, I want to thank our finance department, especially our finance director Chuck Dickinson, who took this project on. It was a huge project. It built the application process. We were kind of in uncharted areas because the application is truly set up for someone who's already received a public transportation dollar. So it was a difficult feat, but we did it. Cory Hall, of course, helped out a lot. So we're here today and this is what this resolution is about tonight. It's to apply for 5307 public transportation funds through the federal Department of Transportation as well as the state of Georgia Transportation. We've been working hand in hand as well with the Georgia DOT as we went through this application. So once we got to this point, maybe fast forward somewhat, they've had a preliminary review of our application, so we feel really good about that. Now, how 5307 dollars work for urbanized areas, that's why we're having to do this, because we're in an urbanized area and we have to pull from this pot. Normally what would happen under normal conditions with this grant would be 80% of the funding would come from the federal DOT, 10% would come from the state DOT, and 10% would come from City Ballast or the local government. That's how it would work if we were in normal times. Now, granted, the deficit is the operating deficit still is the local government's responsibility to take care of. That's the funding structure of a normal 5307 grant. Now, what's happened because of COVID-19 virus, we do have some exemptions in the CARE Act that will allow us to take the funding and with no type of match. And you can spend it operationally or cap. Now, that's the other thing with 5307, 5307 is all operational, but because of COVID, we will, if we needed to, we could use it for some capital expenditure one time. Once FY 2021 is over, which is what this grant would be for, we'd go back to the 8-10-10 structure. So we feel confident from talking with the Georgia DOT that if this is approved, and then we don't have anything out there now, if this is approved, we'll still have time to follow in the CARE Act for FY 2021. So the good thing for us is that we won't have to do that match, that 10% match the first time, but still remember what we've all discussed with public transportation is finding somehow to fund the deficit that we feel is going to happen. And the deficit is shown on the application of about $350,000 a year based on the numbers. Once again, those were our best guess numbers. They may not, they may not be as accurate as we feel, but given the guidelines we have to go by, that's how the numbers kind of work out. So that will be what the application will show, a deficit of $350,000 for the most part.
And that would be only fiscal year 2021?
No, our application needs to get the grants. The application we had to do will show the 350. Once we are into it for a year, we'll have a little better numbers. That's what I'm saying. Now, don't pay your hat on the $350,000, because we got at least that full month of some kind of experience, real data, just so we can begin to kind of guess where this is going to hit. And as we talk of retreat, we talked about an on-demand system of the third party. Now, this works well with that type of model because it can all go to operation for that first year. And that's what we're worried about, how are we going to pay for the operations of this? It doesn't affect the model we finally wind up with. As we discussed retreat, the company that we have talked to is willing to do a fixed route system, let's say in Patterson Ashley Street or fixed route. None of this prohibits any of that that we may want to do in the future. We just finally have some money that we can put toward operations of the public transportation.
What are your comments? See, this comes with a few, but when you're saying on demand, you wanted to start the first year doing the on-demand, can I understand?
That's right.
But that's not what I understood. I thought you was going to do a model where you want to have a third party coming. You would have a third party coming, it wasn't a on-demand.
Yeah, the third party that we discussed retreat was a on-demand, but as we talked with them, we told them we would like, we think there may be some interest in a fixed route system in certain areas. Let's say the Patterson Ashley Street loop to get a doctor's, the hospital, the grocery store, very much willing to do that. So they're just not on-demand. That's what they do the majority of, because folks are steering away from fixed pickup routes because they can't pay for themselves.
Because opposed to, that's the key. We understand that paying for this F Mar, we know that this bus, public transportation is not going to pretty much make itself for the profit. Right now, this is one thing I was looking at, see, we're getting mixed, we're going to get mixed messages. My understanding is, we want the grant, we are fine for it, and when we're fine for it, we're telling them we want it with the third party doing different things. We're not saying that.
Now, the, you know, that's a great point, Councilwoman. The application is not, we're not telling them what we're doing. The application is just trying to get some money to do something with it. They don't care really about our model that we're going to use. They, we're just trying to get our foot in the door to get some type of money for the operations of the public transit system. So the, on the application itself has nothing to do with the model. We're just trying to get the, that's about $1.5 million, a little bit under that is what we're thinking. So that's all we're doing with this resolution tonight, is trying to get our foot in the door to get some money.
Okay, now, we're looking at the resolution. I mean, that resolution you mentioned a couple of times about the tire six.
That's right.
To the right facts, and I'm trying to deal with it.
We have to hear about all of that, because it's federal dollars. Just like any other federal grant we have, we're used to that. That's what we do with any federal dollar that we receive. And if you allow Mayor Matheson to sign the resolution and thirty days when we turn it in, that is our agreement that we will follow all guidelines they have before us for that.
You see, that's from the state. And then if we just offer them, if we just go out and get out a on-demand route, something like that, are we going to consider using someone like you said, the women, minority people?
If they apply, then that's part of the process. But a lot of the other stuff, the two words on their vehicles and things like that, it's just not, you know, you got to look beyond just who's going to supply the actual transportation. There's so much else that goes into this, is who's working the routes. You know, we're going to have to look at those kind of things. There's a lot more than that that's going to go into this. But tonight, in our meeting, what we're asking is, let us get our foot in the door to get the money so we can put an RFQ out to at least see what kind of interest that we're going to get.
Okay.
But you're right, this, we have to hear to all the federal guidelines, just like we do with any other grant that we may have.
I just don't want that stipulation that this is what the on-demand.
It's not, it's not. But let me just, and I don't, everybody, it's not. The application, you will not see it over here, nor do you see it in this resolution. This resolution, you saw my agenda comments, say what we talked about at retreat in March, March 13th, we talked about. We were going to start off, the agreement was, we're going to start off with on-demand.
I know.
The majority of you guys at the retreat agreed to start off with on-demand. Let's see how it works. It's a pilot program, remember that's it. It's not even, it's going to be a pilot program and see how it goes. Then, if this Patterson Ashley reports, we're going to do that fix, but when I took away from retreat, it was not unanimous that we wanted to do just a total fixed route system.
It's not unanimous that we want to do on-demand either. That was not, that was not what we were.
I agree, but the door opens, as I said, the agreement was start with on-demand and then move into fixed route with the majority. I'm not saying you agree with that, Councilwoman, too, but the majority of council members that day, that Saturday morning, agreed to that. Now, again, this resolution has nothing to do with that. We don't have to give them a model. We're just trying to get 1.5 million, what, let me say this, we may, there's a possibility, we may not ever get approved for this. So we'll be back to where we started. All I want to do tonight is for you to agree to let Mayor Matheson sign a resolution to put our foot in the door to get some public transportation dollars. That's it.
Now, what I'm thinking.
Yes, ma'am.
The 5307 grant has been awarded to Louse County before.
No, they are, they're out of 5311 funding source. That's, that's why we're having, what we have to do, because they're a different funding source because we're urbanized. They were not supposed to be funding urbanized transportation from the 5311 pot, because it's a whole different set of scenarios and circumstances that you have to meet. That's, that's why we're going with this process, because it would have been nice to continue as we work, but DOT said, no, the county is getting their funding from the rural resources of 5311. Urbanized areas must pull from 5307. So now, Louse County is not, they've got 5311 dollars.
Well, okay, now, I've been listening to MPO and with Cory Hall, I was about 100 to have them, they have shown new records where they got money for 5307, 5307 were from the.
At first, they got a little bit, when, because the majority of their route was urbanized here, was Ballast, Ballast Transportation. But that, they did that just for a year or so. Now, DOT told Louse County, you continue with public transportation, you cannot do Ballast, because it's the wrong pot of money. Ballast must apply for 5307 dollars. Now, we want 5307, Councilwoman, too, because there's so many more restrictions than 5311. It's the capital, it's 50, you only get 50% of that, 80% they give you. So the 5307 financially is where we need to be going, but that, and we don't have a choice. I mean, the federal DOT says, urbanized routes will pull from 5307.
One last question.
You're good.
Can you tell me, do you remember the last time that the Louse County area might have downed money from 5307?
I don't know. But yeah, as I told you in the air on the phone, we also have a third aspect of transportation, like the regional commission runs, and that is the, with the Department of Human Services for the folks that have the right for no fare, no fee, or they're, they have medical reasons. So that's a third set that's happening as well. So it does get quite complicated in the funding, because that's even another source of funding that the Regional Development Commission gets for that side of the public transportation.
Just one question, please, ma'am. If this trial, I rely on the attorney signing this certification, this agenda fact we asked before. You said the trial, Ron, with you and Patterson and Ashley?
Well, here's what I said. Again, what we're doing tonight has nothing to do with what we talked about at retreat as far as whether we'd like to see public transportation go in our city. All this tonight is allowing me to send DOT a resolution signed by Mayor Matheson to see if I can get any money at all.
And once we sign it, then we can come up with a agenda.
There you go. We're talking about at the retreat, we're going to start on the man, and then we talk.
Once we get the money.
Yeah, get the money. Now, I'm going to say, I've got it out, and I feel confident we're going to get something. I really.
I understand, because I know we have, I've seen something where, with Louse County, that was my experience, got money from the.
Yes, now, the policies change, we are no longer allowed to do that, that's why.
When you say, we need the city of Ballast.
The city of the county. I mean, DOT received a direct, Louse County received a directive really two years ago to say, hey, guys, this is a, you cannot do this anymore. You cannot continue to provide transportation in an urbanized area such as Ballast, 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 Hayhaw, Remerton, all of those are considered urbanized areas. I think there's almost, some of the urbanized areas goes out beyond the Air Force Base. They cannot do that any longer and get 5311 money. Only we're going to build it here, 5307, that's exactly right. And once we get the money, we kind of get an idea where we're at, what we've got funding for, then we can make all these decisions later.
And remember, some of the models that presented to us are, they need to operate in your town first before they figure out what the demand is for fixed route.
That's right.
Where the hot spots are, so they're all very thorough, but the model's not being built tonight. We're just funding the model tonight.
Now, the next, the next step, if you guys authorize Mayor Matheson to sign this resolution, is there's a 30-day public comment period. And it's a little different from our normal public comment periods, because only there's just 30 days and books come. The first 14 days of this 30-day public comment period can be used for citizens to ask for a public hearing, meaning, give me more detail of what you're going to use the money for to get it. We won't have a lot to offer someone because we're, we don't have, we don't have an existing system to share that type of information with. But those first 14 days of the 30-day public comment period will be for someone to request a public hearing. Past that 14th day, it's just the rest of that, it's just a traditional public comment period. At that point in time, when that, when that time is closed, then we will send this pre resolution forward to the DOT. Also, we must, one other thing we must do, we must place an add-in, Ballast terms, over one day add, and announcing the public comment period, there's got to be English, Spanish, Korean, Chinese, and gujurote.
With this, with this contract, now, if you are confident that we should receive something back, with the mayor signing this and sending it in?
I will say this, I will be surprised and shocked if we don't get something. We may not get exactly the 1.5 we're looking for, but I'll be shocked if we don't receive some type of funding. Like I said, we've got a really good relationship with our state DOT. We work hand in hand with Mark Baker in the group from up there, Mark Lambert, excuse me. And they kind of held our hand over this application process, they know our needs. So they're really excited about it. So, but like I said, they may be willing to take your first plans out for us to see if there was anything that they may see that would hold up the process. So we're going to go through the pre-process if you will. I'll be surprised.
They're going to take your hand over, and it's.
That's right.
Continue to support.
That's, that's exactly, exactly right. So I feel confident, but maybe we'll wait and see. I won't promise anything that I can't do.
Go ahead and promise me.
And then, I'll say this, once we get all that process done, as we're talking about at our summit as well, we've got the RFQ ready now. It is ready to go out and put it out there to whoever we'd like to respond to. We've held off about two weeks, we're just not just sure about the COVID and all of what was going to happen there. And I feel we really need those to be, once we narrow down some finalists, we want them to come to our community to see exactly what we're talking about. Those type of meetings will be hard to conduct on a phone or Zoom without those folks coming in our community and voting. So we're going to probably get that out next week, just to stay ahead of the curve a little bit and get that ball rolling on the RFQ.
See, that's my other question, that I have to talk to you. You got that reset, and you're talking, you keep saying, you got it set for on-demand.
I've got it on-demand. I've got it set for whoever would like to respond to public transportation, whatever they would like to offer us, whether it be fixed route. Like I said, this third-party company, they can offer fixed route, they can offer on-demand. They feel our best action, as I do, obviously from talking to them, is on-demand first and edge in to fix. And see, and that's what's happening, it's kind of opposite now. Everybody used to have fixed, nobody wants fixed anymore. The reason they're offering on-demand is because the local government's always has so much money on the fixed route system, they're offering this on-demand in little regions of all these communities, and, and they're profitable. So it's kind of opposite of how things used to be, fixed route was the way to go, it's no longer the most economical, feasible way to go.
But what you're doing, what you asked is just to get the money.
That's right. That's exactly.
And then we go with the government.
That's right.
Then we decide what we need.
Absolutely, absolutely, Councilmen, that's exactly.
Or do without the money.
Just to make clear this, if we don't ask this and approve this, then everything else doesn't matter.
Yeah, any great conversation we have will be no more because we don't want to have any of these funding sources.
But we just got to get the money.
But there's something you stipulate in certain things, but I'm just standing up one.
And I'm.
Maybe you need to begin it for, to get an on-demand system, and whatever company we put out there and bid out, we don't want that to be the criteria, or we want this grant so we can put out a bid for a company to give us an on-demand route.
Absolutely, great point. And once again, that's not what's going to happen, that's what I'm saying, it's going to be public transportation. Tell us what you want to offer City Ballast, it's going to be what it is.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
And we get a chance to see what you're going to put our.
Oh, yeah, well, I'll make sure all of you got to see the RFQ. Cory, Cory and JD, of course, I'm sure all of you know JD is now at Louse County, he's the new zoning planning administrator. JD helped us a lot with the RFQ, so I really feel comfortable about the language and the structure of the RFQ. But yes, everybody would copy that.
Without any other questions, I can motion to approve the attached resolution authorizing the filing of the application for the 5307 funding for the city of Ballast.
I make a motion.
Edit.
Second.
Thank you, Ben. All in favor, show hands. Thank you, Nicholas. Thank you, guys. That's an exciting move. Move on to number four, the bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures, consideration of bids for four stationary industrial generators for the utilities department. Darryl Reese, our utilities director, and our final of that will present.
Good afternoon, council. We are requesting the purchase of four generators. Three of those generators will be used at the elevated storage tanks for our water distribution system. You know, of course, those tanks are there primarily to, as a backup in case our water plant can't supply a sufficient amount of water, and they also give us additional volume whenever we have.
Good question.
They also give us, give us additional volume whenever we have a fire in downtown vicinity or somewhere in the outskirts of town. Right now, those, those tanks are not, are not powered by emergency power source. So three of these generators will go to supply power for those three elevated storage tanks, and the other generator will support the software server that allows us to monitor and control those tanks remotely. We have bids from Powerhouse Diesel, and you may notice there's a difference in the first line of funding source, 59581, and we continue tonight requesting 55504. We went back to the vendor and asked him to remove the installation element of those generators. We want to do that in-house or through a third-party electrical contractor. So we asked them to remove that, thus you see that reduction. So tonight, we're asking you to approve this for $55,504.12.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Just the difference, are we getting A grade quality considering that this is $55,000? Next closest bid was $116,000.
Yeah, fortunately, Ballast has one advantage that many communities don't have, we have a, a diesel generator manufacturing facility in the corporate land to the city. So basically, they're cutting out two or three elements that we would normally have to pay for, the distribution system, they're right here, we can go pick them up, or they can deliver to us, and the third-party sales, sales folks. So as you can see, as a result, we're getting significant savings on most of these emergency standby units.
And I would assume this would be true for the next, I don't know, item as well?
That's true.
Thank you.
You cut to it, I mean, I, I thought the water tower, the water generated through the pressure, what would the generators do to generate actually a pump water? I mean.
Uh, no, sir, they're not there to, to pump the water, you're correct. Now, that weight of that water, a gallon of water weighs eight pounds. We have two million gallons sitting up there at the Broad Street tank. So, you know, we have a significant amount of pressure being generated just by the weight of that water. But we do have electrical controlled actuators there that control the valves that allow us to, to decide if we're going to use the pressure of the tanks or we're going to use the pumps at the water treatment plant. So when we disable the pumps or we have failure at the water treatment plant, or we have a fire downtown, the SCADA system is monitoring the pressure in the distribution system. So if it sees the pressure start to drop, it opens up a valve on the elevated storage tanks so that it can start to supply additional, additional water pressure.
Any other questions for Darryl on this item? I'll undertake a motion to purchase the four diesel generators for $55,504.12.
Some more, sir.
So, councilperson. Thank you, ladies. Councilor Gibbs as well. All in favor, show hands. Thank you to you and us. Michael, okay.
All right.
And B?
Yes, sir. The next item is for the purchase of a mobile generator. This is a 250 kilowatt unit, which is pretty large. This is going to be used at the Wiltokuchi wastewater treatment plant. And for those that visited, visited any of our wastewater plants, you know, we have a headworks assembly where everything comes in, and it's our primary, it's the first stage of treatment, so we try to remove any inorganic items out of the wastewater, sticks, rags, plastic items, try to get those out. Currently, the generator that we have at the Wiltokuchi plant is not large enough to run the entire facility. So when we go into storm mode and we have a power loss out of that facility, we go into bypass mode, which basically we bypass the headworks. So all those inorganics make it through into the treatment process, and we have to remove them later. This unit will allow us to remain in normal operation when we have a power failure, so we'll continue to operate the primary plant off of the large generator that's there currently. This mobile unit will be moved over to the headworks, and it will facilitate a continuing normal operation in that first stage of treatment to try to get those inorganics out before they affect the treatment process. And you may ask, why are we putting a mobile unit there instead of a stationary unit? At the head, at the headworks, of course, when things first come into the plant, they become septic. So the, the bugs have used all the oxygen that was in the water, so it becomes anaerobic, which is, which is septic, and it starts to give off hydrogen sulfide gas, that rotten egg smell that you smell in the wastewater. Those gases are very corrosive, and if you look on top of the headworks now, even though we use stainless steel materials, much of that is starting to deteriorate, and we get about 10 to 12 years out of that stainless steel material up there. These generators are not stainless steel, and we would probably shorten the life significantly if we put that unit out there permanently. So we're going to roll it away from the headworks, stored in one of our maintenance facilities. And when we have a storm coming, or we lose power, we'll move it out to the headworks and connect it to the MCC.
So that is sitting on, that comes from Ballast?
Yes, ma'am, that picture of the trailer, that is the fuel tank, the trailer, and the necessary storage for the cabling system to allow us to rapidly connect it whenever we have a building.
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Your special, my governor, when did we get, we completed that Wiltokuchi water plant out there? It was 2016?
2015, I think it was, probably, completely, I think it came online in 16.
Yeah, in 16, four years ago.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I got very good. Before anybody would even be cleaning. It's fine, that's approved, go to my time.
All right, any further questions for Darryl on that item? I need a motion for the council to approve the low bid, Powerhouse Diesel generators for $60,592.4.
Go, yeah.
Thank you, Councilwoman Biggers. Thank you, Councilman Carroll. Who's a race. All in favor, show hands. All in favor, show hands. Hands. Thank you. Now to move on to boards, commissions, authorities and advisor committees with council approval. I am, I am honored to move up one. I want to move up to 5C for the first item, if you would. That is a beautiful appointment that, that I'm honored to make. My very first month on the job. I got to go sit in on that, that board and get, got to meet the Shonda Jenkins. She's one of our resident members and on that board and what an exceptional woman, what a caring woman for that board that she sits on. With, with no objection, I would like to appoint her, to reappoint her to that committee. No objections. I'll move on to the other items and ask that the council allows us to do these as consent agenda. Item 5A, 5B, 5D through 5F, all the other appointments. And I'll run them down to rapid-fire fashion and ask that there's any objections. For the Greater Lounds Plan Commission, Chip Wilds, his term expires in July. He's expressed interest in being reappointed. For the Public Art Advisor Committee, Robin Freddy, Sarah Lowe and Angela Krantz are cycling off. Robin Freddy and Angela Krantz, two excellent members on that board, are asking to be reappointed. For the Val Austin Lounds County Construction Board, the adjustment appeals. Michael G. Miller, his term expires June 30th. He's expressed interest, he's going to express interest to go back on as well. And the Val Austin Lounds County Parks and Rec Authority, Vincent Miller. His term expires June 30th. Mr. Miller's expressed some interest in going back on. And finally, for the Val Austin Lounds County Zoning Board of Appeals, Alan Strickland. His term expires tonight as that expressed interest in being reappointed as well. So I'll ask for a motion for agenda items 5A, B, D through S. Mr. Mayor, there's a consent agenda. If there's no objection.
We just want to prove them what we want to.
If you don't like any of them, how's the time to say it?
There's only one act.
Well, I want to share Oliver to be considered for $100.
Yeah.
She, she did express some interest.
Well, she, she sent an application in.
I don't believe she followed up. Gordon, come on.
I already looked. She didn't send one in.
Hold on, let me get back to you.
So she has three names?
Well, it has three members and there's three members that have applied. She's one of the three that applied that just wasn't mentioned.
Yeah.
In his review. And that just wants to bring up, tell them to mention that Cheryl Oliver has.
Oh, now I stand corrected. I believe Cheryl does want that third, took that third, you're correct.
Right.
Cheryl Oliver, I apologize, the grand name of the arts, once under the art commission. That, that shouldn't get no breaks. Councilor Kobe, thank you.
Yes, because I was going to, really.
Cheryl, thanks for bringing this up. So with that, I would like to hear a motion for 5A, B and D through F. Someone.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Show hands. All right. Thank you all. Those are all excellent, excellent applicants and excellent people in the service as well. Citizens can be heard portion right now. Mark Barbour will come back up and read, I believe, just one.
Yeah, what we're going to do tonight is leave the email and it's from Roger Budd III. And he is asking for us to look at our time on this very similar to some of the prior requests and prior years. I assume you all have council room for a member of this. That's a link email. So we're going to present it just as we have received an email from Mr. Budd. I was already working, I think you all got a, probably about a week and a half, two weeks ago, receiving an email from Mr. Budd concerning pretty much what this email stated. I'm already working on a response to Mr. Budd that I will make sure all you guys have a copy of that. So we're just going to present it exactly as it is. I'm going to be verbatim word for word of what Mr. Budd would like to reflect in our minutes. And I've also, you've got, you've got a copy out in front of you, but you also, I also included attached to that is our local LVR concerning Mr. Budd's request. Kind of give you an idea of where, what our land development regulations stipulate right now. And then we'll go for there. Like I said, when I get the email completed to Mr. Budd, we'll get, you guys will be part of that discussion. And if there's, if there's traction to the board with any kind of change, we'll take care of that at that point in time again in the agenda item. So that was more of an informational process and the city council committee is to you for official record for the city of Austin. And that was the only, you know what you said.
Let's take looks. Because obviously, a lot of the city handlers report.
Not a lot this evening. I did want to report, as you know, we do have a consent order. I sent our email about, I guess, last week summarizing and in some cases more detailing of what that consent order does consist of. I don't want to get into it tonight with it, but if you have any questions on any of the, the, any of the regulations from EPD, I'd be so happy to have that discussion with you in more detailed fashion. Again, just want to reiterate that we will have, Daryl, we use a must of, we'll have meetings with the EMC and make the determination of what their financial responsibility will be. Certainly, as I mentioned in the email, the $122,000 fines on the table immediately. I don't think we'll have any trouble paying 100% of that fine. But we also are going to ask for other things such as years worth of testing. The additional third-party testing that we have begun even before the consent order to try to take care of the contamination that's happening below us that really have nothing to do with us. But it does affect our North Florida neighbors. So we want to be a good neighbor and try to figure out what in the world is happening there? Where the contamination comes from, even further, what is it? So we're also going to pay for a scientist to do DNA testing. Is it animal? Is it, what can, I mean, you go as far as you'd like to go with this kind of testing. So we're going to ask for financial support from EMC to provide this. Because currently, the, the test that we do three times a week at Aqua Pico Creek, Knightsberry and the Georgia Florida lines, $10,000 a month, the cost we're occurring to do that. Not complaining about the cost, but I think it's well worth it. So for once in all, we can figure out and let folks know here's where the contamination below our discharge is coming from. Now, since that December spill, we've been posting our results online. We repeatedly posted our county's results online, which have been very, very helpful in this process of testing below our discharge site. So they, they actually took up the testing of Aqua Pico Creek first. Once they ended, we began the process. So we're still appreciative of the Lounds County for doing that. But it, it is a tremendous cost to us, but it's a necessary cost. So those are the type of things we'll be asking for from EMC. As I stated in my earlier email, we've had several conversations with them since this bill. Very cooperative, very understanding. We just couldn't really talk much detail because we didn't know what that final order was going to be. And really, and when it's in a 30-day public comment period, it's on the EPD website. That, so the document, everybody's, now truly may not be the final document depending on the comments they get from the public. So we won't have a final, final document until this 30-day period is over. And I think the period ends May 27th. There's nothing in there that I was not expecting. Daryl and I had a really successful meeting with them mid-February after the bird supper. The fine was much greater than, than it actually turned out to be. So, so we're, we're, we don't want, we hate, we're in a consent order, but we did ask for them to continue the consent order that we were under. I think it looks good that we remain accountable and transparent to everybody. We're going to get, just because our current consent order was about to expire, we had no intention of stopping the work. So I think this next five years will just show that we'll continue to put the effort forward so we don't continue to have some problems that we do have.
What, what is a discharge line? Where is the discharge line? Stop it?
The discharge, usually what, we, we look at 84 Ridge because that's after we discharge. And that, that, so if we, if we have, that's where we would notice it right there. And the 84 Ridge is where our votes tested.
Okay. Now, the Whitlepucci River runs out to the ocean?
No, it, it, it goes in, connects in with the Swammy River in, in North Florida.
Okay. That actually goes into.
Right.
Now, what our neighbor Cypher was complains about, now, now what else? Contaminated, uh, the Whitlepucci Desert continuing on down there. And, and the word about this, the charge, the contamination is coming down from north into, do we, do we test up there to see what it is before we get in our territory?
That's right. Yeah, that's, that's a great, great question, counsel. Because we do. We test at three sites. We test at North Austin Road when it's coming into, to our community. So we know what we're getting from further up north. And we don't do any further north than North Austin Road Bridge. That's where we start testing. Then we test at the 1, Highway 133 ramp. And if you look at our website and follow the testing, it tells our story. It's, the water is contaminated when it comes into North Austin Road Bridge. It goes through some catacombs, has some meanders to the 133 ramp. By the time it gets to 133 ramp, the contamination levels are high. When you go to our discharge point on Highway 4, that's the cleanest water in the river. Our North Florida folks don't like us to say it, but look at the facts on our Facebook page and the test and it clearly shows it. The cleanest water is right past our, our discharge back into the Whitlepucci. And that's what was happening with the December spill. You know, we looked at meetings on January 8th. It's been 30 days since the spill. We knew those spikes that were happening on the Georgia Florida line couldn't be us, but we couldn't go in there and say that because we didn't have any proof. So right before I went into meeting, I received an anonymous call saying it's not your fault. It's, there's contamination coming lower than you guys. Of course, again, those of you that were there, I couldn't, saw how vicious that crowd was that evening. So I couldn't go in there and say that with any proof. But since that point in time, that's why we hired that third party. And that's what it's clearly showing. But yeah, our discharge point, counsel biggers, Aqua Pico Creek is in Brooks County. Knightsberry, I think is in Brooks County. And then the third, the third one is right there at Brooks County as well. So. I'll just, I'll leave it at that. I'll, I'll leave.
Why we got to pay it all then?
Ma'am?
Why we got to pay it all if it was in that spill?
Well, that's the right question.
It, it started having us have a spill. None of this would have came into play here. And I think it's good PR for us, number one. And I'm, and I'm sincere when I mean it. It's just not for show. I think we need to be part of that solution for our North Florida folks. Because there's no doubt in the past, we all know, nobody has shared our responsibility. We've had some spills and we've done some damage to that river, absolutely. But very frequently, not too often, every, if you look at this, if you look at the, the chart on our website, you'll clearly see that river is contaminated most every day. Even when the city of Austin has nothing to do with it. Heavy rain events, you can look below our discharge point at Whitlepucci and there's heavy rain events. Contamination levels spike. Some of them spike greater than when we had the Stewers spill. So we feel very confident now that we have this information that our Stewers spill that put us in this EPD order really never made it to our North Florida neighbors. But we're going to be a good neighbor. We're going to find out what is heading that way. And, and besides, we know it's not that so.
We're going to enjoy that, that river for decades to come.
We are going to ask.
It's going to take them and us together.
So we are going to ask EMC to put some of that bill. We're not going to put it by ourselves.
Well, I, I just want to say that, uh, with water, when the water is coming down from north of us, we should, we take care of it. We got some good water, water here. And I need to look at, I'll be nature to make it good water too. Because if you know, every area, that's our responsibility to treat any water.
That's right. Great point, great point. Counselor, too. Because once we can identify what that contaminant is beyond our discharge point, the easier it will be for them to treat their water and do those kind of things once they have a better group, uh, feel for what that contaminant is. So.
Another thing I want to ask you, what was the three points, Daryl, you were talking about when we were checking for the testing? I don't, I see I got the, O, O'Carroll Creek.
Aqua Pico Creek. Knightsberry Lane and the Georgia Florida line.
Georgia Florida.
And pretty much when it gets to Brooks County, downwards to the Georgia Florida line. So that's our three testing. And we were already doing Georgia Florida line on, on a regular basis anyway. We've kind of dropped off a little bit, but we were doing that already even for still so. Again, a lot of what you said in that consent order, I think we were already doing. For example, the equalization basin that we've all been talking about for two years is in there. We've already started it. I think some dirt and sediment moved here. Last air tour started and the, the end date for that is in October. We'll have an equalization basin built. And again, it reminds you that that's, that's the additional holder capacity. But yet at the same time, we continue to take care of our overflow infiltration problem, which is truly the cause of the spills and heavy rain event. Happy to tell you the last two rain, heavy rain events we had, four and a half, five, six inches rain. And those two events, we had nothing there on. List station, Mael, Whitlepucci Mud Creek. Everything more likely was supposed to be. So.
Mark, thank you. Counselor comments? If they can remain brief, I can make the national day prayer.
I was going to say, the national prayer program is starting. The mayor is the, one of the featured folks. If we could just kind of wrap up and everybody can be okay with that.
Mayor can go ahead and leave and the mayor will do.
The mayor brought down the, 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 the council comments and then the adjurors.
Counselor Biggers.
I'm going to skip out. Thank you, counsel, very much.
Marshall, we got at least 13 meetings that you got set for Hill Avenue.
Yes, sir.
You don't know what who that is over there.
We're going to do a little more signage there. We, we do that, we put that there. We need to do a little more signage, because we're trying to place these on properties, of course, the city owns. So in that area, that's about it. And we didn't really like the location either, just because of the traffic. But we'll get some signage. Richard's working on putting signage.
Okay, because that's the only thing I'm pulling out. I mean, you look a little, if I didn't know that for the.
You're, you're absolutely right. So we just, we don't quite have the signage right, Mark, because it was a spur of the moment decision. We wanted to put them out, but we'll get some signage.
And you, and you need to get, uh, like this one right over here, it has a stain that you can walk.
Some steps, yes.
Yeah. In order to ready to get with somebody.
Right, right.
One page is going written.
Right. At first, they did not. When we first come out, we were just going to, we didn't know what kind of participation we were going to have. So we just had to, we showed folks how to open that door really easy and just chump it in. But since then, we've had such great participation. We've got steps now for folks to use.
Steps, really, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it does. We thought, we, we just didn't want to put too much expense into it. But not knowing the participation, but within the first day, they will be filled. Yes.
You know, and once you advertise a little more and everything, you know, we will see how it works.
Yes, we're being positive, a lot of great positive comments with the drop-off recycling.
Okay, but it seems like they mix and everything, cardboard and everything. When I say everything, it's type of recycling. So what you're planning on doing is take it out to the, out there and go through it and separate it?
Yes, sir. That's what we do now. When they, when they curbsack, it's single-stream recycling. So everything's mixed together. And that's our problem. That, that's our problem in the market conditions. Because the market no longer wants contaminated material. You know, so if you remember our retreat, we showed you those containers that separated. So right now, it's still single-stream, but we wanted to continue to recycle for our citizens. We wanted to do so. But eventually, our, our goal is to get those individual containers that we showed you at your retreat. So then, we have a market. We can make some money and sell the recyclables because they will be separated and not contaminated. But right now, same, same process we're doing now, except folks are dropping off and still doing curbs.
I seen Dr. Will in New Dijon and China. We, many Dijos got goo goo's, uh, uh, recyclers. And they said it wasn't, you know, it wasn't taking, you know? And that was the main source, I think, that was taking this recycling.
You're, you're absolutely correct, counsel bigger. That's why the market conditions are on there now. We're having to pay people to take out recycling because it's contaminating the, the single-stream process that we utilize. That's why, number one, we don't.
What's that, what's that cost to us?
Uh, so right now, we recycling, the way we do it, uh, just with the budget numbers, we, it, it, we lose about seven, $830,000.
$830,000.
And that pools from our other services and public works. We offer like a commercial pickup.
So 21% of people are recycling and we lose $830,000.
That's right. That's exactly.
Every year.
Yes. Now, definitely, if we decide we're going to branch out and continue this drop-off of this cool container we showed you at your retreat, there's going to also be a cost there. But we certainly don't believe it would be where it's going to be a drain of $830,000.
Do we have more locations? Or we offer more locations?
Well, we will, like I said, the expression, we want. Well, we don't, like I said, this first, we wanted to be on city-owned property, so that's our first, you know, five months, makes sense, we own that. A lot of Mr. Biggers are speaking on, so we try, of course, we're going to choose locations that we own. So, but yes, as we do this and it becomes more popular, we have, yeah, none of these sites are study concrete, it was just to say, hey, here's some, here's some way you can recycle through this crisis we're going through.
When we started recycling, we, it wasn't, I mean, I knew it wasn't going to be, it wasn't, it wasn't going to pay for itself, but it got, we just ain't got no market for it. And now, it just costs, it just eat, eat our lunch, you're really right. And I don't know, it's a better off, yes, go ahead and jump it into the rain field, but we'll see.
That's right, well, like I said, once we get it, where it's not a single string process and it's separated, we can sell it and either break even or make a tad profit. That's our problem now, is it's contaminated, no one is buying contaminated, we have to pay people now to come take our contaminated recyclables. So the only way to do that is to separate it, and there's no way that we can hire enough folks to do that house to house and separate it house to house. So this is the best way, and here's what we're going to do as well, one of the thoughts is that we also are going to open it up to the Louts County folks. If you live in an unincorporated area and you want to recycle, because they really don't have a recycle program unless you go to the dump site. Advance doesn't have curbside recycle, bring it in, drop it at one of our sites, it helps us even better. So we're going to, and that way we'll at least get more people in the community recycling, which I think is the goal. Whether you live in the city or county, Lake Park, Ohio or Emerson.
They come into our city.
We're better off in our mental, yes ma'am?
I said, they come into our city to work, so with those recyclable bins that we have, we talked about at the retreat, that generally must be a problem.
I don't think that, we may not give them one bin, but, but we'll take their, their, their.
Yes, when we'll curbside, I've got a lot of people calling me, asking me when curbside.
Well, curbside, I, I don't see it, I would see curbside not taking place, I would say at least one hundred and sixty days or more. It's just simply that, and I know people find it hard to understand, but when that track, when that contaminated material hits to our recycle center site, an individual, one of our employees has to touch every piece of that contaminated material to separate it where it needs to go.
For help.
So it is, this is the worst area, that, that's why we stopped it, because there, the, now our residential trash truck picks it up, and meantime, they don't have to come in contact with the trash, and but recycle? There's no choice, and those men that work at the distribution center when it gets there, they've touched every piece. Now, of course, they got the adequate equipment to protect them, but we just saw no reason to continue to put them in that much harmful way in this virus situation. So I don't see that coming back for sixty days if, yes, too close, yeah.
I would say, uh, turn it in because they got families too.
I, I, I'm quite certain, I'll be coming to you guys fairly shortly to ask for your, all of your opinions on that, that is.
Well, Martha, wait, how many research did, uh, Mr. Hardy did?
Yes, sir.
Did he, he find either this, either the recycling program that had different containers for one, for glass, plastic, and separate containing the?
We showed you several of those out of the same city, Thomasville, City Mulberry, City Albany, all of those local communities separated like we, we like to get to. Now, we want to expand their program, but they're, they already doing that, yes, sir.
It is, it, what, what about the cost of getting all those kind of containers?
Was, that's the beauty of the model that we showed you at the retreat, it was one unit, one mobile unit, and you could, we could make it eight bins, eight bins, whatever we decide. You know, there's seven types of plastics that can't be mixed together. If we decide we want all seven, we'll have plastic number one, plastic number two, so we're going to make that decision as that goes. We may still have to separate a little plastic if someone gets, you know, in the wrong, wrong bin, but we, we can make that single trailer hold as much as we like it to.
And then the other thing, we could have some conversation with those different cities that already got it in highest work and what is the, the cost still?
That's right. I, I think some of y'all met Nate Taylor, Nate Tyler from City Thomasville, he was our public work speaker, featured for acting, we've been in constant. He, he has retired since, but we were already speaking with him about this type of recycling model before he retired, so we're definitely doing that. Folks have experience, you're right, they're the best folks to talk to. Yes, councilman?
I have one thing, um, I know right now during this time, a lot of, a lot of us are practicing social distancing, but I think we need to change that. Let's, let's do more physical distancing rather than social distancing. We still need to reach out to our neighbors and our elderly people in our community and see if they need any help, see how they're doing. A lot of these people are lonely now because no one can reach out to them, so let's not, let's try the physical distances, because we don't want to make anyone sick, but we still need to reach out to our people in our community. Get to know your neighbors, ask anyone if they need anything. For those of us who are fortunate enough to continue to still be able to work, if you can purchase a meal or do something to help someone, because there's a lot of people in our community that are hurting right now. Uh, we need to also, we need to remember that. Um, the census has been extended to October thirty-first, twenty twenty, so we need to encourage our citizens to continue to fill out their census paperwork. Um, absentee ballots have started arriving, so we want to make sure everyone participates in that. So other than that, I don't have anything.
That was a great point, councilman Howard, because the, the recycle bin across my customer service center, it was full the first day simply because some young men went around to elderly people's homes and got their recycling garbage. So absolutely right, we need a little more of that happening. I just want to let you know too, that our, you know, our folks, our department, we had about three hundred folks that sheltered home. Uh, we came back Friday, I think everyone was happy to be back at work. Uh, this worked well, as you know, the public buildings are locked till, uh, May thirteenth or May fourteenth. Depending on any spikes in the virus or what have you that have, we'll make that decision about the point in time if we're going to extend the public buildings being closed until June twelfth and to the governor's emergency declarations. So for now, the plan is to open public buildings, phasing in folks back into our public buildings on May fourteenth as it stands now. Again, as I told you last minute, we've been truly blessed here at the city, we've got six hundred and fifty employees, we've had some scares, we've had a few quarantining, but we have not had a positive case out of six hundred and fifty folks yet, and so, that's amazing, so we're very, very proud of that.
Do we have any masks in here, can the public get masks from them? I mean, do we have, you know, some cities giving away masks or?
As a matter of fact, I'm using myself today, he let me know that we do have some access to some masks, um, that we might, I mean, we, it's known, I mean, it can be a ton of, but we may, we do have some masks that we might, can give us folks that, that otherwise cannot get a mask. So, so we did have that, so.
Anybody else?
National Secretary.
Yep, yes it is.
Recognize the secretaries.
Well, I can see clerk, this clerk.
One second.
Very good for you.
That's not about you, so you don't do that.
I saw, I made comment to our clerk earlier about how beautiful she looked in the photo.
We got another card.
And I commented, our other city clerk, Taylor was beautiful as well in that same photo.
Thank you.
It's now included, we.
For Jerry.
You're strong, man.
He hasn't been here in a while.
Yeah, one more time, come on.
Zoom.
Zoom.